And the order of school call. Donna Inman, President, Senior Player is not here tonight. Jeff Stevens.
Present.
Tara Jenke.
Here.
Alyssa Sanz is not here tonight. Dave Mackey.
Here.
And for Stout, here. And we also have Christina Norland, Superintendent. We've got this principal, Principal. And Tyler, does nothing in all night? Okay. Move an eye. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'll make it. I'll support it.
Any discussion on the agenda? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstain, motion carries. Moving on to public comment. Do we have public comment tonight? Rose?
Hi. Rose Bronzick. I am on the foundation for this school, as many of you know. Myself and Brian Millie, who's the secretary. We met with Christina this summer. And our basic purpose right now is to provide scholarships to the graduating seniors. And this year, we did donate $3,000, I think $500 to each of six seniors. And I'm bringing that up right now because Brian and I are at a point where we're kind of wanting to fade out of the foundation. We've done our time. We've been here for many, many years. We're not leaving the town. But we'd like to move on as far as our lives and get some younger blood possibly into the foundation. And so I'm working with Jessie. I'm working with a couple of people that have already talked to Brian Millie. And there is interest out there. We're not a big group. We don't do anything really fancy schmancy. The last all-school reunion we had was in 2016. It went off really well. People said we should do it every year. That's not going to happen. But because we have such a small group, I mean, people came out in droves and did volunteer. And it did work out really good. But right now, the balance in the foundation, and we still have the scholarship money to give up. We are getting paperwork from Jessie in reference to that. But right now, we have a $17,000 sitting in the foundation balance. And we will allow, of course, we'll get rid of three grand of that. We, our basic goal right now is to update the address database for the graduates of the school. That's our biggest thing as far as outdated right now. And I know volunteers from each class would be nice to work on their own classes as far as addresses go. You know, as far, we've got an old system, I think, as far as the address database, Jessie. And that should be updated. So we have some computer people out there, volunteers, something like that. That's a big help. Because getting, people know that we're here. They know that they can volunteer and to donate. But unless they see that in writing every now and then, they forget. You know, so things like that happen. So we are, Brian and I, are looking to get to hold of Jessie and Christina and what else we want to later on this month, by the end of the month, the first of October. And get together and then put our heads together, see if there are any volunteers out there. And we'll go from there. Okay? Second item I have is in reference to the trophy cases. And during the tour, I had a nice tour again with Christina. We enjoyed it. I kudos to all the students. However, I don't see any trophies displayed for the '70s, '80s, or '90s. They're in storage. I saw them in the library. Was it an over sign? That's my question. And are there any plans to rectify what I think is a problem for the past athletes? That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
I'll go. I'm Carrie Maniguzzo. I have a few things that I'm thankful for, continuing our good things that we started a while back. First of all, I'm so thankful that the fourth graders were split this year. Two classes of 16 is very manageable compared to one class of 32. So I'm really excited about all of the learning and just the growth that can happen with such a manageable number. So thank you for doing that. I'm very excited that Mr. Cantala is back. And also very excited about the combination of Mr. Cantala and Mrs. Norland to see where they are going to progress there. Those are my good things.
Thank you.
I'm Jamie, I'm a kindergarten teacher. And I'm very excited about the beginning of this year. We've had great two weeks so far. And watching the K-2 students go through their expectations on a daily basis has been just so wonderful to see. And even our substitute, Michelle Anderson, she has been listening in, trying to follow along with us. She had all our work as well. And it's just great to see the kids wanting to be sparks. And it's just wonderful. It's great to hear even having.
Any other public comments? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. And we did a recommendation to put the items in the consent agenda. Have a motion for that? I'll make the motion. Do we have any discussion on the consent?
I'm having trouble hearing. Could it be louder?
Sure. Do we have any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstain, motion carries. We'll under reports, Superintendent, and K-5 Principal.
Okay. I am going to start with Tyler's report, our business manager, because he's not here tonight. Not a whole lot of exciting stuff happening right now, which is a good thing in the financial department. First, he'd like to mention that we did not purchase a new school bus. Thank you, Jeff, for noticing that he accidentally had given us the wrong school's financials.
Oh, boy.
Jeff is like, what? What's this? We missed the memo. Thank you, treasurer. And a big cheer. Okay. Cash flow remains positive. We received the August state aid note to continue business as usual. Tyler said that I and he are working on submitting the SR2 grant. And we are waiting some of the monies to finalize for the title application. There are one of those years where the state's deciding to go with the new electronic system. And guess why? It's all glitchy and things aren't happening the way they're supposed to. But we've been assured that we can spend the title funds as of July, a couple of months ago, just like a normal year, because it's the state's fault that this group is happening. So nothing to worry about. It's just a little inconvenience for business managers. SR2 are some of the monies that we've gotten due to COVID. But we have a lot of flexibility for spending as opposed to actually pretty much specific COVID-only purchases. And so we'll be working on that. Audits are underway with our new auditor, Hungerford. And Tyler notes that there are some differences, of course, between how they're doing them and how previous auditors worked. But it seems to be going really smoothly. And he anticipates that they will be complete by the first of November. So that's just about it right now. Okay. And then I've got a really long report, so here we go. School is off to a fantastic start. I appreciate Carrie and Jamie saying the same thing. We have overheard some of our elementary students saying it was the best first day of school yet. So that's pretty awesome. Our teacher and staff in service was also very positive this year. We had two jam-packed days with lots of learning and some review. And I was very pleased that our whole faculty and some of our staff got CPR training. So I'm really happy that we are in that position, that we're ready if we have that kind of incident. And John Stone was our awesome trainer. And he also provided us training on using our new AED machine. So that was really valuable. It is awesome and energizing to have new teachers and staff on board with us. We have great additions to the DB family. And our returning teachers and staff have also been awesome in helping them along and making them feel welcome and showing them the ropes. It's been really, really wonderful to have Mr. Cantala back on staff and specifically as a middle high school principal. And I think it's going very, very well. Our preschool is doing phenomenally well. It was so much more work than I ever expected to get that thing off the ground. But it's really, really wonderful. Our teachers are just outside. It's so great to stop by and see these just lovely smiling four-year-olds, wonderful kids. Every time you come in, they'll tell you how much he loves something. The dad just, the fire drill. "Mrs. Norland, I love fire drills. I wish we could have the fire drill every day." Rashes. It's wonderful. We've really got lucky with a great group of kids. Okay. And we're still learning a lot of ropes for Great Start readiness programs. And Alyssa is the head teacher. And she's just doing a great job making sure all the licensing components are also in place. So it's great. And Gina Wedden's all smiles. She's awesome. Okay. Summary of required school-wide goals based on testing. Okay, this one's not so fun. So last year, as you recall, the legislators wanted us to do a little COVID report of our percent engagement across the student body. So we recorded on that every month. This year, they have a slightly different requirement. They don't want us to report every month at board meetings about that. But they do want us to set goals for the mid-year goals and then end-of-year goals based on standardized assessments. And so Jessie and I discussed this not long ago and came up with these goals. Schools that have preschools and that have high schools even need to have a preschool goal. And a high school goal where it used to be just those who were N-step tested. So anyway, we have some pretty basic goals. Like by the middle of the year, 60% of our students doing their early literacy and math benchmark assessments will have improved or maintained. And by the end of the year, 80% of them will have. And then some of this tests a couple of times a year. Once at the beginning, once at the end. And we have an end-of-year goal for 80% of those students to improve. As for high school goals, I forgot the last page. But we have the, a percentage of students who will be at proficiency in ELA on the PSAT and SAT. And then similar percentage for math. But in February's been really, really required to talk to you about this. So I just wanted to give you an introduction to what this is all about. In February, we'll tell you a little bit more, not a whole lot more. It's just another legislative requirement. Okay. So that's that. MTSS update, that's multi-tiered systems of support. I've shared with you that triangle with the green, yellow, and red tiers that kind of explain how we do our instruction. And that also relates to how we do our behavior management. And that's also known as PBIS, Positive Behavior Intervention. And of course, we've got a really strong start to the year. In this way, really great behaviors so far. Kids are happy to be back. It was already mentioned that the elementary students, and actually all the way up through seventh grade, were taught the Common Area Expectations in various locations of the school. And kids just really have been on to that. And it's going very well. The high school level, I assume Mr. Cable saw you a little bit more. But eighth through 12th grade students created videos to teach each other and future students the expectations. So that was really fun to see those last week. So something a little different. You might remember that our district was trained last year, all of our staff was, on Capturing Kids' Hearts, which is a program that the Portage Health Foundation is sponsoring across all the schools who want it. It's extremely pricey if we were to want to pay for it on our own. We can't just do that. But Portage Health Foundation really thinks this would be a great thing, really for our entire area. If kids really have positives poured on, it's a lot about relationship building between staff and students. That's where this good things comes from, where we get to hear something good from whoever's picked. You know, if his teacher's somewhere, it's really good stuff. There's a good kind of a protocol for processing with kids when something isn't quite right. Really dovetails very nicely with PBIS. So this year, we had some good discussions at our staff training. And a lot of the teachers decided to kind of overlap the Capturing Kids' Hearts way of setting up expectations at the beginning of the year, which was through a social contract where everyone's involved in this discussion process. And then we emerge with expectations that everyone can agree to. And we overlap that with our school expectations that are part of our PBIS. MTSS process of sparks and bolts. So you've already heard sparks mentioned, safe, problem-solving, always respectful, responsible kids. And bolts at the high school, be respectful, open-minded, loyal, trustworthy, supportive. So teachers were able to facilitate discussions with kids about what is important? What do you think is, like, we value as a class? And they come up with those. And then sorting them under the different kind of categories of the expectation. So I thought it was really neat how this is all really coming together. October 7th and 8th, a few weeks from now, we have two days off of school. The rest of the district and the rest of the area has just the 8th of Friday. But we have also Thursday because we are going to do Capturing Kids' Hearts 2.0 training, basically. It's kind of a different angle, not quite the same as what we've already done. But supposedly, high-quality stuff. So we look forward to that. There's a lot of initials and things. So if you ever have questions, if I'm just rattling off initialisms and acronyms, just let me know and I'll slow down. School lunch is going great. Big thanks to Ms. Judy. We're super excited that we have some awesome new kitchen staff downstairs. And it's going as well as it possibly could be. We just had another record broken for school breakfast. So that was really neat. Just, and we're doing great. Oh, we have a lunch record this year too already. Can you believe this?
Great.
Meanwhile, I personally went to the other superintendent saying, how is your lunch program even surviving? How are you standing above water? And I'm like, what are you even talking about? It's like the best it could ever possibly be. I can't even imagine. So kudos to Judy and the team. And Chromebooks. So I reported a little bit on Chromebooks last year. We had some funds through the COVID stuff to buy them, but then we ordered them. And then found out the hard way that they actually weren't available for many months. So it was very frustrating for teachers and classes of seeing this technology and then not being able to get it. And of course, there was a worldwide shortage, so there was nothing we could do about it. But they all did eventually arrive. And now every classroom in the middle high school has a Chromebook card designated for that room. So the teacher can have management and control over it. So we don't have machines wandering, loftile Chromebooks in the building. We've got one in the upper elementary. Mrs. Maniguzzo's got a bunch of her own that she managed to figure out and acquire on her own. One of the teachers, Mr. Stout, got a grant for a whole classroom set of them. And then there's an extra part that's just available for as needed, like for the testing that our local elementary's doing. So that's really cool. We've got enough Chromebooks for our needs. Fire prevention is scheduled for October 5th, Fire Safety Day. So we thank our local fire departments, Dollar Bay and Tamrec City, for hosting that event. It's always a real special day for the kids. Last year, we had to nix the smokehouse, which is probably the most popular part of it, where the kids get to crawl through a kind of smoky trailer house kind of environment. And this year, we're able to bring that back. So happy about that. Even the preschoolers are going to get a little dose of fire safety. And what, I had a good talk with Tim Inman. And he said that what Lloyd does is he introduces himself to the little ones. "Hi, I'm firefighter Lloyd. Nice to meet you. What's my name? Lloyd." And then he pulls on his pants and says, "Hi, I'm still Lloyd. Still friendly Lloyd." And then hooks on his thing, "Hi, I'm still, who am I?" And it kind of gets them really comfortable and familiar with someone dressed up in the fire vans here, so they're not scared. I'm really excited about that, kind of being preschool when that's happening. New flags? So we have a brand-new flag outside. I don't know if you noticed, it's bigger than the one before. We kind of got this by luck and by happy accident because we needed a new flag in the gym. You might have noticed it was getting very, very yellowed. And so we ordered a new one last year. And no one went up there with a ladder to measure it. We just estimated, but actually we underestimated. And we made the flag that was bigger. So now it's perfect because the one outside was ready to be replaced with a brighter, shinier flag. So we put the bigger one outside and ordered the appropriate size, which is 10 feet for the one in the gym. And that looks really sharp, too. And as you know, part of our bond project was to permanently white the flag so that it is able to stay up all the time, which does mean that it phrase a little bit more quickly, obviously, because it's up there in the room all the time. Okay. What's next? Mr. Cantala will be doing some updates on the athletics today, so I'll just leave that to him. Good stuff happening there. And probably the question a lot of people have on their mind is what's up with COVID? So far, I've got everything I can find, crossed fingers. So far, no COVID reports within our school. But of course, we all know that COVID is in the community. And a lot of the other local schools have already had to deal with it this year. So we do feel like we are prepared for the day that that happens. We were able to order some free PPE that was offered to schools in Michigan. So those aren't here yet, right? Who knows when they're going to be here? And then also some free antigen test kits. Because new quarantine rules and allowances have students coming back if they're vaccinated or if they COVID for the 98 days. And some different rules. But even kids can come back a little bit earlier, even if they have not met those requirements, if they get antigen tested here at school. They can be here three days earlier than the previous quarantine period is allowed. And so that's why schools are trying to order some of those. We do have some left from the last year in the spring when we were testing our athletes. So I'm happy about that because some schools have absolutely none. And they're not able then to move forward with these new allowances. But we are. Our big push is to keep people home when they're sick. As you know, we're not requiring masking this year. We are encouraging it. And at the elementary level, we're strongly encouraging it. But most people are not opting to wear them. We're just making sure that they have a safe and healthy and respectful, welcoming environment for those who want to. But really, it's zero, one, two kids per grade level who are choosing to wear masks or whose families want them to. So that's been interesting to see. But buses do require masks. And that's a federal order through the CDC that all public transportation has masking. I feel like I was going to say something, and then I got sidetracked. The scoreboard here has previously stated, a few different occasions, that we plan to follow the health department's guidance on all of this. So until you tell me differently, that's how I think we plan to function. And I've not really heard much this year from parents or community members about it. Last year, of course, there was a lot of feedback, and that was really helpful. This year, kind of, no one's saying much. And I think that's kind of consistent with the fact that we've had very few kids who are, you know, who've been wearing their masks. And I did call a lot of the families of kids who are masking, just to see kind of where are we? How comfortable are you? Are we on the same page? Does everything feel okay? And those parents were really great to talk to and open about things. So that was good. When we do hear a positive case, the process, just to refresh on this, is, the health department informs us officially of that because they get that information. We share a document. And the school's job then is to find out who were the close contacts within the school. We add names to the document that the health department then also sees simultaneously. We get information by email and those power announcements through our student data system to the family of, families of the kids who are within three feet or within six feet and tell them the requirements that the health department has given us. So we're just passing on that information. And then we usually follow it up with a power announcement text so that parents can see, oh, I better check my email, there's something important going on. And then based on whatever their situation is, the vaccination or not, or how close they were, even how many feet and so on, we'll let them know what their plan has got to be. So hopefully, all will go well. We'll just have to wait and see. Any questions about all the COVID stuff? Not quite done, but it was a big deal. No? Okay, so far? Okay. Bond issue and purchases. So we are nearing the end, of course, of our bond project. And that's really exciting, all the things that are happening around the building. And a couple of things we're still figuring out. And one of them being a table counter area in the lobby. So if anyone has ideas and feedback on that and the completion of that, I'd come all ears as we're trying to figure that out together. We've got some carpeting that's much appreciated. I've had people enter the first floor hallway and go, wow, this looks great. That's really nice to hear. By hopefully the end of Christmas break, the second floor hallway will have replaced carpeting. It'll be nice. The office, which desperately needs it. This classroom's going to happen October 7th and 8th, according to plan. So it'll happen with it all, as well with that. Then the question that some of us were talking about is what do we do with the mop covers? And they have any ideas? Can you paint that stuff? I don't know. It's not going to look that great. Guess we'll cross it if we come to it. Okay. So good stuff there. We have gotten some local estimates. And then from a company we worked with before for shades in some of the classrooms that still need them on the windows in the lobby, the way I'm getting that done. All right. There's some new signage outside, which helps with safety at morning drop-off. And the elementary teachers and I discussed adding a possible crosswalk by the TR Davis store. Didn't happen. We, it ends up being a permitting process that we have to go through with the COVID County Road Commission if we do decide to do that. So we'll just continue that conversation. So it's not going to happen anytime soon if we do want to do that. We have continued to employ a crossing guard. As I had mentioned, it's usually really hard to find somebody. But I knocked on my door and said, can I be the crossing guard? And I said, yes. Thank you. Absolutely. Sounds good. So that's been good. I did tell him, you have to smile and wave at everybody who comes back. So he's trying. Good. And you all, please. Okay. Almost done. Okay. So this one, I've mentioned, I've alluded to this a few different times in the past. But look up behind me on the board. I've mentioned that the name of our district and school changed a few years back under Susan Michael. We did the process that we wanted to do of merging TR Davis Elementary and Dollar Bay High School into one school. We were strongly recommended to do that by our friends at the ISD. It means half the number of audits, half the number of reports you have to do. It just makes a lot of sense. Schools our size pretty much always have one school building. But the names are a little funny, and the board was never asked for feedback. So our district name was Dollar Bay Tamrec City Area Schools. That's probably what you all think it is. Officially, on the state sites, you'll see Dollar Bay Tamrec City Area K-12 School. I don't know why, but that's what it is now. And this was our school names. These were our school names. And now it is Dollar Bay Tamrec City Area K-12 School. Can you see the difference? Look carefully. Hyphen.
K-12 and K?
There's a hyphen in one. There is no hyphen in the other. I don't know why, but I kind of think, I'm putting off what other districts and school buildings are called. I kind of think Chassels is copied because Chassels is really similar. Chassel Township School District and Chassel K-12 School. But my feeling is we should go back to Dollar Bay Tamrec City Area Schools for a district name, the one everyone thinks we are and have been for, I don't know, probably many, many decades. And this one, I think, is up for opinions and votes and everything else. There's a process that we'll have to go through and change it at the state level. But it's not as big of a deal as the content consolidation. It's just, every time I see these when I'm in one of the state systems, I just kind of cringe. I'm like, what is, why? Why? Like, what is this about? So I just wanted to introduce that to you and then give you some time to think about it. And then maybe we'll take a poll and see what people want.
Name or school.
If you want to change it.
Can't it be the same? I mean, like, you can't have the same district name that's going?
No. I've never seen anyone do that. It would add confusion on reports and stuff. Because you're kind of looking for a name a lot of the time. You're trying to find out if you're working with a district or the building and all the reports and things you have to do. So those shouldn't be the same.
Okay. So the only, the difference between the two that are is now is just that hyphen?
Yeah.
So that's?
Yeah. I wonder, it's possible that they attempted to make them the same. And then we were kind of stopped at that point in the process. And then we're told they can't be the same. And so maybe that's why they took out the hyphen. I don't know. I wasn't involved in that. I just wanted to throw it out there for you. Think about it, and we will come back to it.
I don't know what I think about it. I think we should change it to, personally.
Change this one?
I think we should change it to the number one. Yes.
Okay.
And I think, I think K-12, all of these better description than K-12.
I do, too. Yeah.
Do we need the area? Or do we cross out the area? Dollar Bay Tamrec City K-12 School.
Area K-12.
We'll leave the area in.
It's, we have students from outside of those two communities. So I think the area is important.
Okay. If people like that, we can just go ahead and, I think we probably should take a vote so that this is in the annals of history on that. Someone likes this?
Yeah.
All right. Gee, that's much better.
So do we have, do we have a big motion?
I think we should, yeah.
Okay. So do we, one at a time?
Yeah. Together, so everyone's going to agree.
So do we have a motion for Dollar Bay Tamrec City Area Schools as a district name? And Dollar Bay Tamrec City Area K-12 School? And of course, the dash in the middle is still.
I'll make that motion that we adopt the names as presented.
And I'll support it.
Cool. Well, that's going to make more interesting.
Any discussion? We just had it.
There's no cost involved in making these changes?
No. No.
Is everybody in favor?
I didn't hear the comments.
Okay. All right, opposed, abstained?
Jack, it looks like he's trying to say he's not.
On the state of the board, it's on.
Okay, it's done then.
On favor?
Yeah, I did, I just asked that. On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, motion carries.
Hey, hang on, that was Dave made the motion?
And I support the motion.
All right, thank you.
All right, principals report for the middle school, high school. So first off, I want to thank Rose Brunswick and specifically Brian Merle just for all the work they've done with the foundation. So oftentimes, it's work that's, you know, behind the scenes work. And Rose and Brian have really, I think, done a great job to support our seniors with scholarship opportunities. Like Rose mentioned, how much fun did we have at the All Schools Union, right? We had a blast. And just maybe not always noticed, but certainly appreciated. So thank you for everything. Enrollment in the middle school, high school is, it's up, it's big. At least in the middle high school goes. We're at 188. It looks like we might be gaining another student today to bring us to 189. We have big classroom, big classrooms happening. But our teachers are amazing and they're doing a great job with the 6th through 12th so far. Even eighth grade right now is, we had to limit it, it's at 30 students. So we just, we could not take any more students at that point. All right, Christina, you're welcome to jump in on any of that if you can. PBIS kickoff. So Mrs. Norland mentioned about PBIS, such as positive behavior interventions and systems. But basically, it's our expectations, right? So what do we want from our students? How do we want them to behave? What do we expect from them? And not just in the classroom, but in the hallways or in the bathrooms, right? In walking to lunch, in the new commons area. You know, what do we expect from our students? So we have some fun. We always try to kickoff in a big way, right? And make it fun. So what we did was we decided to put together a movie competition. So grades, we had kind of two separate competitions. Grades eight, nine, and 10, we're all battling against each other. And grades 11th and 12th, so juniors versus seniors. And each had a different area of the school with different expectations. And they made videos highlighting them. So what is, you know, what is it like to use technology in our school? What are our rules or our expectations? What's the language that we use? And man, they have, they just have so much fun because they talk, they talk about what we need to do, but they also give these really funny examples of, you know, they're kids, so they have fun with it. So maybe we could, we could share those out hopefully at some point so that everyone can see them. But the kids were awesome, the teachers were awesome. And I, we are going to announce winners tomorrow. And we said that the winners are going to get, for the competitions, daily bars and esteemed fame and glory for the remainder of the school year. So we've got that going on. All right. Scheduling, so just a lot of just nuts and bolts stuff happening so far this year. Just, there's a lot. I mean, it's power school, doing enrollment, CTE work experience, early college, special education schedules, et cetera. Just want to thank Rachel Jade Babcock, Sean Colick, our new English and Special Ed teacher, Christina, and just everyone else for all the help because it's, that's a community endeavor. It's a lot, so it's getting there. One of the things I think Dollar Bay does such a great job with is just kind of that specialization and like personalization of kids' schedules and what do they want? What's their career path, what do they want to do? And we work towards that. So we've been working on that pretty heavy this fall. Fall sports, got quite a few sports underway, lots of our athletes competing. And more, some athletes in more than even one sport. So just Sarah Moilenin, if you see her, like, thank her. I mean, she's teaching five classes, she's our athletic director. She's coaching middle school basketball. She's a full-time mom. I mean, she's amazing, so she's doing a great job.
A second bat.
Yeah. So, but yeah, so sports that are happening. Middle school, high school, cross country, coached by Mr. Z. The boys finish, they're consistently finishing, what, first, second?
Second, third?
Third, yeah, all, you know, so far. Girls have been in the top five. Mercedes Garapi was first overall in JAV the other day. That was so exciting to see her have that success. And Amos Norland, Nick Thomas, they're consistently in the top five. So man, we've just, we've got some great runners and they're, and they're doing a great job. Junior high basketball, like I said, Sarah's coaching that. They, I think they've got two wins this year. They're playing at Hope, Hope tonight. So that's, that's cool, that's happening right now. JV and high school volleyball, Rachel's doing a, doing a great job. They've got a couple, couple wins, a big early season one against Zontanagan. So that was, that was exciting, so. And then middle school, JV and varsity football. I think the team is, the varsity team's 2-2. They, you know, both teams coming off of wins against win. Copper Bowl and Copper Swim this week in Hope. So a lot of our kids doing some pretty cool things athletically. And finally, for me, I just want to thank specifically the Board of Education. I want to thank Christina, the staff, and just the community for giving me an opportunity to get back here. It's, it really does feel like home again and it's been awesome.
We're happy to have you, Justin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. So we'll move on now to action professional items. We have recommendations to approve the hire of Glenn Wenberg as food service assistant. I'll make that motion. Do we have a second?
I'll support. And I'm actually wondering if we could, since we're hiring four of the same type of position, is it appropriate to make a motion for all four?
Absolutely.
And then that opens the door to, do you just give us the nutshell resumes on each?
Sure, just want me to go through and either do that?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So we also need a recommendation to approve the hire of LaPricet Bertolat as food service assistant.
Louder, please, it's over the fan.
And we need a recommendation to approve the hire of Donna Fontaine as food service assistant. Another one to approve the hire of Sheila Jope as food service assistant.
Okay, and then, yeah, so it was kind of neat how this all came together. We were really thrilled that we have an awesome food service team in place now, especially coming off of last spring when we tried so hard for months to get a substitute custodian and it was just not happening. So we were kind of a little worried that the same thing would happen when we found out that our food service assistant from last year was not able to continue with us. But meanwhile, Judy had some really good visionary thoughts about how the program could kind of be revamped and reorganized a little bit. As you know, school board, our head custodian, Brian, was taking about two hours out of his day every day to work in the kitchen, which was not a good use of his time. And Desper, I was in there often, different people, Danielle, who we pulled in to help as needed. So needed a revamp. So we put the word out there and really, most of these heard about us just through word of mouth. One of them was here at this very meeting last month, said, "What, what was that? I think that might actually work out for my schedule." So, so we have a Dollar Bay alum, a Dollar Bay mom, a Dollar Bay grandma, and another Dollar Bay mom who are now on our team. We didn't ask them to put together fancy resumes. We just said, "Come on in for an interview." Judy conducted that process, I was out of town for a good part of that. And people just were awesome, were great, great fits. We had one more applicant who's also a Dollar Bay previous mom and grandma now. And she would have been great too, but it just turned out and didn't work out with, you know, some of the details in the end, so that was okay too. But we're just really pleased with this team. We've got one person, Glenn Wenberg, working six hour shifts. He's our regular and we've had feedback from the kids, "Wow, this guy's great. He really gets down there, he listens to what the kids are saying, he moves fast, he's on top of it." So that's really neat to hear from the kids. And the others are just kind of rotating in and out through the week. Two hours maybe breakfast shift or two hour lunch shift approximately. So I guess if I did miss anything, Judy?
During dishes, obviously, or second chance breakfast is huge now. So there's a lot of banging up of things and, you know, that kind of thing. Or it's not necessarily for a food prep per se. But even setting up the lines, taking out the garbages and those, those three actually are dishwashers, which for me, I was actually doing like morning dishes. I mean, I didn't sit down, I mean, for three years, going on four years, I've been here. I ain't got no sap at all. And so this has really been a great help, you know, for, for me and my family. You know, because we're growing. I mean, you know, our counts are just, we're averaging close to 200 for lunch a day. So that's, that's a lot of kids. I think that's great work.
Any questions from any of you, from any of us?
More discussion, they still have promotion, we have a second. So we're going to move on to all in favor. Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carries, all of us good workers. So moving on. Recommendation to approve renewal of the delegation of school plan review and respect for third to a local unit of government enforcing agency. Do we have a motion? And do we have a second?
Sure.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, just a reminder, this is that thing that we have to do every year. That means that our construction project, everything affiliated with that can be inspected by somebody local, it could be otherwise, according to the state law or wherever, some, someplace or other, it's written that we would need to get somebody up from Lansing to do that. So probably that would be for us here in the U.P., when there are people who can do it. The school board just has to say officially, this is what we want to do. I think last year, one year, we might have missed it. And then we have to have a special board, we need to hurry up and do that. We're going to have to do that convenient process of a downstate guy coming along.
No more discussion? All in favor? I oppose, abstained, motion carries. Okay, is there any old, are there new ones to discuss?
I just have a quick question. So how can we resolve the woodshop teaching position for this trimester?
This trimester, we don't have woodshop at all. That was always our backup plan is our teacher, Row, was good enough to say he would come back second and third trimester if we didn't find somebody to replace him, which we haven't yet. This, this tride is not here because he was going to be visiting family in Hawaii for a few weeks. So it wouldn't have made sense to try to find a sub for two weeks straight. So, yeah, so just, we resolved it by, did you hear that Mr. Kentschler talking about the headache of scheduling? And are we nicer way than that? Yeah, so a lot of, you know, group of kids who really would be enjoying woodshop right now just has to have to choose another elective, basically.
But they can get in second try?
They can. Yeah, thanks to Mr. Row. But if he, you know, if he decides he's done, as you think is maybe his wife's wish, then I don't, you know, I don't know what we're going to do. It's hard to find this position. Although, there are a lot of people advocating at the state level for this and really, sorry, it's a little bit more than you asked, but it connects to all the conversations we've had about the teacher shortage and a lot of educators are working on the legislative and on the MDE to make it easier for people to be teachers, people who already are. For example, like, someone pointed out recently in a meeting I was in, it's easier to be a CTE teacher of woodshop than it is to be a high school teacher. Even if you have the same exact experience, you can't do it.